The Board of Adjustments meeting that they held after it was remanded back to them by City Council for failure to do even the basics of their job where they had to collect testimony and evidence. Now, as we all knew going into this, this meeting was a farce and you'll be able to see that. And you can also tell that they have been lectured about his conduct before City Council, which is why they are extremely quiet. So this is going to be like one of the least interesting of all of the videos because they pretty much act like scolded dogs and they even have a babysitter in the room with them trying to make sure that they do things right. But as you can tell, it is all for show and it's even included in the agenda as we go through and we take a look at what it is they posted on Facebook. Take a look at items four and five on this agenda. So here it is, you know, additional testimony and evidence. And then the next item, which is it doesn't matter because the only motion before here is to approve the findings of the previous meeting. Now remember what we heard in the City Council meeting, which was we would end up in the same place. The procedure for this meeting would just be for that decision to come before him for his signature because the decision was already made. And further, we already know that it doesn't matter what evidence is presented because this is progress. Now we can go through and take a look at what I submitted. I submitted an audio file and some written objection to this because I knew that no amount of evidence and testimony matters as Mr. Bradley, the chairman, had already admitted to with the story of the cul-de-sac and specifically stating that that's what this issue is. And so the response to anything that we could submit would be that's progress. And as we go through, we take a look at how quiet they are and how they conduct themselves just for show. I want to ask yourself, why is Mr. Bradley even in the room? Why is he even chairing this meeting? By all standards and codes of ethics, he should have removed himself from the situation and have no further involvement in this whatsoever. His continued involvement is a violation of the 14th Amendment of the United States. And I tried to address that in the next meeting for the next video before City Council and you'll see that pretty much the response is eh, whatever, don't care. And at the end of this video, I want you to pay particular attention to Judy. Now I'm not quite sure on the pronunciation of her last name. I always see T H and think Thames, but you know, so I'm not going to go through and you know, mispronounce her last name all the time. But pay very close attention to her after the meeting because what they don't realize here is adjourning the meeting doesn't turn off the cameras. So we caught some very interesting side conversation that went on and that side conversation suggests a conflict of interest. And so this procedurally is a complete farce and this should not have even been allowed. If there was any ethics, and I'm about to start playing the video, but if there was any ethics, Rod Bradley would have been removed. In fact, I'll go one step further. Given the all the conflicts of interest here, I can't find enough members that don't have a conflict based off of what we're seeing for them to even hold quorum in this. So let's go ahead now and dive into the video. There won't be a whole lot of commentary after this point, but there will be some because there's a few things that they say that are unbelievably stupid. So let's go ahead and dive into the video.
Is this the master book? You have the master.
Do you want that?
No, no. I just wanted to make sure that we have.
I'll get you one.
Here, I have one. I'll get you one. Just that one?
Do you have any to bring down?
Just wondering.
Oh, it's okay. I got it.
Maybe there's the other one laying around.
I got nine o'clock. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Does anybody else want an agenda?
Yes.
Judy Cambs?
Yes.
Doug Weavers? Jeff Bray? And Seth.
You guys need more than one?
First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the September 4th program meet. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Not observed motion to approve. Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing done, the roll call, please. Names against the caller.
Rod Bradley, Judy Cambs, Doug Weavers.
No, 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 no. Call Doug's name. He made the motion.
Doug Weavers?
Yes. And then Judy.
Judy Cambs?
Yes.
Then the rest.
Rod Bradley?
Yes.
Joe Bray?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is any additional testimony and or evidence on special youth permit number 2024-50. As the board had an opportunity to review all the materials that have been presented the last couple of weeks. I understand. Yes.
Rod has gotten some letters of opinion from local real estate brokers, appraisers, and brokers, appraisers, assessors, because we had talked about assessments. So we would like to submit those in evidence.
Okay. Did you have not these pretty important numbers?
No, we didn't. We just.
I did keep a copy for myself.
If you would like me to read them off, I could read them, but I would hate to bother you with the time.
So here is an interesting question that I would like to insert here. Remember when this was at City Council and we were talking about the remand and evidence and I was told, hey, you don't submit the evidence or anything the night before, you know, that you got to give it like 24 hours in order to submit the evidence? And yet here we are seeing in this particular video that that same rule did not apply to the other side. In fact, they didn't even submit it the night before. They waited until that meeting at that moment to submit the evidence or what they are claiming to be evidence. We'll get into that a little bit more here in just a bit. So I'm trying to figure out why there's one set of rules for me as far as when I have to have anything submitted by and why there is another set of rules for the other side for timeframes to submit evidence. And go back and watch the previous video here in City Council when we were talking about this as far as, you know, it's being told 24 hours in advance, at least 24 hours. So why do I have to submit everything 24 hours in advance and they can just show up and submit their documents right then and there? I'm just wanting to know, why is there a difference in the timeframe in which to submit everything? I'll let you and the audience answer that question for yourself.
Yeah. BSC is presenting it to the board. Yeah, make enough copies for each one of the four members. Was there any questions or comments on any of the materials that have been presented?
Alluding to what Dwayne said, I made two phone calls yesterday to local real estate agents. They've been in this community, one for over 50 years, one for probably even 40. I find them very professional people and I just laid it on the carpet. I said, give me your professional opinion about the real estate values in this area. Should a funeral home be built on the site that in question? And they honestly did not feel that it would impact any negative value whatsoever in their homes. They felt it probably would enhance it. I just think personally that if we don't have some calling cards, we're building a beautiful wellness center. If we don't have some of these amenities in our community, people are not going to come in and buy a home in Dennison either. I've been here for 50 years and I stand on staying here and I have nothing but the good harvest community in mind, but I'm not saying that this is going to do nothing but cause good things and grow Dennison and kudos for them to invest in our community and build a nice attractive facility. I also called Avoca. I've got some friends down there. What's a funeral home like down there? Nothing but good things to say. Very well maintained, very well kept. No problems whatsoever. And it does not devalue your homes like it.
Okay, so there is a couple of absurdities that need to be addressed in this statement. First off, the idea that building a new funeral home is going to attract people to the community and comparing it to facilities like the rec center? Okay, put your answers in the comment below here. Whenever you've made a decision to move, especially moving from one town to the other, have you ever gone to a realtor and go, man, I hope the funeral home is nice enough. I hope the funeral home is updated and is modernized. You know, the funeral home and its looks and conditions is very important in my decision of where to move. Can you find me one with a funeral home in it that's been updated recently? Has that ever been a part of anyone's discussion at any time with their realtor? Usually the discussion is probably more like, eh, the funeral home, maybe there's a better area? All right, so put your comments down below on your ideas of, does this funeral home, you know, put itself on par with a rec center? But to another point here, there was a specific mention of the Avoca funeral home location and whether or not that had an effect on property values in the surrounding area. Has anyone taken a look at that area? Because character matters here, right? Characters of the area matter. It matters so much, even the Supreme Court makes it as one of the determining factors in determining whether something is a nuisance, right? And I read from the court rulings about how a nuisance is determined, where they put in there the nature of the neighborhood, you know, the character of the neighborhood and what the person, our people living in that neighborhood determine as annoying, offensive, or intolerable. And I keep trying to bring this up here because if you take a look at such court cases, when it is determined that something is a nuisance in an area by the normal person in that area, the worst thing that could happen here is they push this through, then it turns out that they do more than one funeral a week or funeral service a week and end up being shut down and enjoined by the court for being a nuisance because such a business has no place in a residence such as ours. But let's take a look at the Avoca area for an example here. Okay, so here is the funeral home that they specifically mentioned at this meeting and determining whether or not it has an effect on the surrounding property values. Have you noticed a difference here? Let's take a look at what else is right there. The Avoca Auto Wash, Avoca Food Land, Avoca Seed and Chemical. And then up there you got the Estes Express line, a distribution center where you're likely having a lot of traffic, including semis coming in and out. Now, if I were to guess here, what would potentially be having a bigger impact on property values? Funeral home or Avoca Seed and Chemical? I'm going to guess that the funeral home is not the biggest factor and I've already conceded that there are things worse than a funeral home that you can put into an area that would have a bigger impact on property values. Now, when it comes to property values, you got to understand that there is a difference between a property's commercial value and a property's residential value. So in here I can see where the commercial value of the land, if a business wanted to buy property from several of those households, that the commercial value could increase, but as far as residential value, that may not be the case. And it is easy for them to try and hide it if they're taking a look at taxes because let's face it, if you're taking a look at a property for its tax value, when has taxes not gone up? I would ask you that. And you also got to understand inflation. So if the only increase in property value is coming from inflation and you do not make any inflation adjustments, then guess what? You're not doing a true apples to apples comparison and trying to compare our neighborhood to an industrial neighborhood that just happens to have a few houses in it is not even an apples to orange comparison. I would say is like apples to bananas or apples to oceans comparison here. But going through the packet of information, they also have West Side Funeral Home in its packet. Let's see here, let's take a look at this. All right, so that little red exclamation dot from Google Maps is the location in question right across the street from a gas station. Now, how much this is in use, I don't know. I mean, you put the address in there from the packet of information that they provide, but you notice there's quite a bit more than just a funeral home in that location. All right, so you start seeing here that the comparisons are not the same and that all of these real estate agents and appraisers are comparing the effects of a funeral home in a mixed use neighborhood next to a bunch of other commercial businesses and trying to apply that expertise to a purely residential neighborhood that has no other businesses anywhere near it. And you understand how the comparison there is not the same and how the courts and how they outline the determination of a nuisance would see these locations very differently. And yet they don't care. None of that matters. They're just going to push it through. All right, let's get back into it. Actually, before we get back into the video, I really want to drive this point home about adjusting for inflation in the values because they want to say, well, the values of the home keep increasing, but as we know, as a result of inflation, anybody who's gone through the grocery store, think about that. Take a look at the price of eggs over the past few years. Has the eggs increased in price because there was value added to it? That there was something different about how it was made that increased its value? Would you say that, say Hy-Vee being right across the street from two funeral homes is what made grocery prices so much more valuable adding to the neighborhood? Or has the increase in price been from the result of inflation, just like everything else that has gone up in price and expense throughout the grocery store to other consumable goods? Think about that for a moment and think about the non-adjustment for inflation that they are purposely ignoring in order to get to their claims that values go up even next to a funeral home. And even at that, if you were to take a look at the values, if you were to go back and take a look at the year before and the year after the funeral home was built there, and I'm not talking about they bought a funeral home and renovated one, I'm talking about you would have to go back to get an appraisal the year before and the year after because even if in the immediate first two, three years, it takes a 5% hit on its value. Well, think about that. If it drops it 5% in value and then you come back to it a couple of decades later, after a lot of inflation has accumulated, you would see that the dollar value of a property might show larger, but A, it's not as much as it would have been and B, it's not because of value added, it's just simply because of government printing so much more money that each dollar is worth less and so it just takes more dollars to purchase the same value of items or the same amount of items, just like with eggs at the grocery store. But no, they won't consider that. Oh no, that's too inconvenient. Okay, let's go ahead and get back to the video.
Here's your original for motion and evidence. And one of them, yeah, Rita was, she said you blew my name. I've also given a letter to the City Council on it and all three real estate people in town felt that it did not devalue their homes.
I asked the previous assessor, Abida Karen also, and she did not see how it could negatively affect, and she was in office for 45 years.
Thank you for the additional information. All the board members now had a chance to review that too. Thank you. You had an audio if you wanted to play? Sure.
Now, this next section of the video is they're going to play an audio from a conversation that I had with an appraiser and I tried to go outside of their area of influence. As you may suspect, given the occupations of those involved, they pretty much could just go to their friends and colleagues and ask them to write a letter for them that is in favor of whatever it is that they want. But you got to once again understand here that all of those appraisers saying, oh, I don't see a funeral home having an effect that are their friends and colleagues are all judging it based off of mixed use neighborhoods. Not a single one of them that I can find. I can't find a funeral home in a purely residential area. And so when they're going off and asking, hey, would this have an effect? They're taking a look at it as, well, you know, funeral homes are surrounded by all these other businesses and they're in a, you know, mixed use neighborhood or neighborhoods that are already commercially zoned and developed that and have already significantly transitioned. Oh no, I can't imagine a funeral home, you know, adding just one more business to an area populated with business having an effect. They refuse to provide a distinction here, which is important. The audio clip here that they're about to play from my conversation, what it is, is I'm trying to drill down into the specifics of a purely residential neighborhood. And the whole purpose of putting it here because they want some sort of number, well, is it going to be half a percent or is it going to be 5% or could it be up to 10%? And the whole point here is that you can't figure that out until afterwards, is that there is no way to know exactly what the extent is until two to three years after it's built. So we have to wait until after it's built for a couple of years to figure out what the damage is to our property values. That's what they're saying or that's what it's being said here on the video. So there is no way to provide a hardcore data-driven, you know, extent of what the damage will be to property values because you got to wait until after the damages happen to be able to assess that. And you'd have to do it through some certain type of appraisal and be able to provide pictures of what the entire area looked like prior to the construction, to what it looks like after the construction, what the changes are, not just to the character or looks of the neighborhood, but how that, you know, increases traffic. And we'll get into in the next video, the whole, oh, it's only going to be about three a month. Yeah, right. That may be the claim that needs to be made in order to get this passed under the ordinance that doesn't allow for undue traffic congestion, but we all know you're not investing this much money for that three funerals a month. All right, that doesn't even make economic sense. But in any event, the whole point here, if you want to watch the, watch this entire section and listen to the audio as I'm probing, asking a question in multiple different ways, is that in order to determine the actual percentage amount that the funeral home would have as an effect on our specific neighborhood with our specific characteristics, you won't know until two to three years afterwards, when the damage is already done and irreversible. So with that said, let's go ahead and listen in.
Yes, do you do residential property appraisals? All right, so I have a question for you. How much does an appraisal cost? Okay. Okay, so basically I'll give you the scenario. So I live in Crawford County and I'm going outside of my county in order to find an appraisal for a specific situation. So are you familiar with Denison? Are you familiar with the neighborhood that is out there in the City View Edition by the golf course? All right, so 12th Avenue South there, there's a plan to build a funeral home, right? And it's gonna take up four acres of land and three to four acres, 9,000 square feet with 79 parking spots and parking lot to figure out how this would affect my property values. Well, basically, if you did an appraisal, would you be able to, let's say, would I need an appraisal before or after to figure out the damages to my property values or would I need to, or could you assess it, you know, even after it's built, what it would be if it wasn't there?
Well, all of that is hypothetical.
Okay, in general, based off of your experience, does a funeral, I don't know how often this comes up, but if a funeral home is built in a purely residential neighborhood with no other commercial businesses within a half mile, does that generally, you know, decrease or have no effect on property values? It's a special use permit. 9,000 square feet. And they're gonna have a parking lot that will accommodate 79 vehicles. In the City View Edition on 12th Avenue South, so you know where the golf course is? Yes, so on 12th Avenue South, it's gonna be in what is currently a hayfield when you go out there, and it's just right across the street from the properties. On 12th Avenue South, kinda like between City View Drive and 15th Street. Does it, what, does it change the characteristics of the neighborhood? I mean, I get that there's, you know, some of this, you know, where, you know, mixed-use neighborhoods versus a purely residential neighborhood. Yeah, but the entrance to that is off of Main Street that we never see anything, you know, from there, whereas the entrance to the funeral home is gonna be right there on 12th Avenue South, you know, you know, between City View Drive and 15th Street. Yes, single story, yes. Single story, and there is, the neighborhood had signed a petition wanting to stop it. All right, what about, well, I was talking about the, you know, for valuation for selling on the market.
I can give you a valuation, but just hypothetical of a funeral.
So there was no way to really assess how it's going to affect it one way or the other? All right, so you're saying from what I'm gathering is that there is actually no real way whatsoever to fully determine what impact, if any, it would have until after it is built? Okay, so in the appraisals, any opinions about right now is just how it is right now and cannot in any way, shape, or form determine what the impact is gonna be? And so no actual appraiser could assess what the impact would be? Okay, okay. And so I can write this down in my notes for future issues. Here to come back to you on this, what the, see here, your name again was? Tyson, and the company name? All right, I was trying to remember what now, Lakeview, okay.
And there you have it. From a completely neutral third party who is not a friend or colleague of anybody involved, being contacted randomly out of the blue, just being provided the details of the situation and asking them how this would impact. And what you heard is, as far as being able to determine what the extent would be, you know, if any, is all theoretical. There is no way that you can, prior to it being built, provide anything that would be able to tell you one way or the other, which means all of their friends and colleagues that are telling them, oh, this won't have any impact, is baseless opinion that you can't really tell, and that there is a difference between mixed-use and purely residential neighborhoods, and that only by doing a retroactive appraisal a couple of years after the fact, will you be able to truly see what the impact is. Everything else is just theoretical. Anything prior to it is theoretical, and they can't provide anything. So really, from that, you get that all of their, you know, so-called testimony that they provided, which, you know, we don't know what it all said. I mean, I know because I got a copy of it, you know, but it's just all, you know, opinions from their evaluation of mixed-use neighborhoods. Has no relatable meaning to the purely residential. But if you get a completely neutral third party that doesn't even know he's being recorded, which thankfully Iowa is a single-party consent state on that, is giving his honest assessment, not knowing that it's being recorded, not knowing that it's gonna be used in any type of hearing or situation, and I find that when most people don't know they're being recorded, they're more honest. Whereas on a recording that they know of, and usually on camera, but that doesn't seem to be the case, you know, in this process, but usually if they know they're being recorded, they tend to, you know, be a little different about what they say and how they say it versus the casual conversation that gives you the unabridged honesty. And so you go through there, and that's just on property value. So they can't provide any evidence, which by the way, I would say that in any proceedings here, that them wanting to get a special use permit, the burden of proof is actually on them to be able to provide. Now, I could provide a holistic national study, which I have done, but as far as to this specific neighborhood, you won't find until a couple of years after the fact. And I keep bringing this up because, you know, about the due process, the burden of prove and all that, that should ring a bell to a few people here. I mean, I shouldn't have to explain to them what type of role they are occupying throughout this process and how they are perceived, determined to be, and all of that throughout court precedents. I mean, do I really need to tell them what their job actually is? Or having been in the role, should they actually know how they are classified and by what rules and standards they have to abide by? It's unbelievable. I mean, there's a reason why I say Bradley can't actually be in this meeting, can't be chairing the meeting, and can't even vote in this after his display before City Council. But you see, they've operated like this for so long, you know, and I would almost go as far as to say, you know, the appearance of corruption for so long without challenge that to them, they don't even know how improperly they're behaving. They don't know how wrong it is for them to be doing and acting the way that they are. They don't even know how to do their job because they've just been a rubber stamp for whatever their friends and colleagues and, you know, deep-pocket people have wanted, that they've never actually been challenged on anything, and they don't know what it is they're supposed to do or how they're supposed to behave. I mean, I, I don't think they understand, you know, just how bad this is gonna get. Even if they understand just how badly they're behaving and just how arrogant they are in thinking that they can get away with it, I don't think they actually know what the consequences of their actions is gonna be, because they've never had to worry about it, because they've just been able to operate as a rubber stamp to use their positions to benefit their friends and the deep-pocket donors and so forth, which by the way, that comes into even bigger play here when we get to the City Council and want something that the mayor said that is just unbelievable. But any event, we'll go ahead and have you go through and watch the rest of this process as they go through, one, having to be told how they must conduct the vote and what it is they must say, because, you know, again, they have a babysitter there that comes into play more towards the end, and you'll see that they do exactly what they, what he said they were gonna do when it comes to, you know, the City Council meeting, that they already made their decision, the vote would only be for that prior decision to come before them for a signature, which that prior decision has absolutely nothing to do and doesn't take anything that happened here into account and just move that along, because this is progress. So you can go ahead and watch the rest of this, but after this meeting adjourns, listen to the side conversations.
Any other comments? Questions? If not, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a motion to approve the findings and the decision of this September 24th meeting. Is there a motion?
Keep in mind that this is not the September 4th meeting. This is the October 8th meeting. So just kinda goes through and lets you know about the motion that they are proposing about what the date is of what meeting and what was said up to whatever that date was is and is not being considered.
The findings are in your sheet or in your book on the green sheet?
Rod, I'm gonna read the sentence, the, on your findings and motion, read the 3A sentence, and so that the motion can be as follows in agreement with your sentence.
What the board found?
Yep, in accordance with the, the last one, I think, is the code section at the very bottom.
So the board found it follows the request for a special use permit as per City of Denison ordinance 167.4, the proposed use is allowed as per ordinance 174.11, going to the Board of Special Use Approval to build a new funeral home on the property has been approved. It was motioned by Gravy, signed by Weavers, to approve the request, white sustained. Eyes for Gravy, Weavers, Tams, and Bradley. Code section 174.11, sub-paragraph 3A, "Any structure or use of land to be allowed by a special permit shall by its design, construction, and operation adequately safeguard the health, safety, and welfare of the occupants of adjoining and surrounding property, shall not unduly increase congestion in the public streets, shall not increase public danger of fire and safety, and shall not diminish or impair established property values in surrounding areas, and shall have no significant detrimental impact on the use and enjoyment of adjoining properties."
So just think about what it is that he just read. There is more than one standard by which they have to be able to prove through testimony and evidence, and they ignored all of those standards, except for they tried to claim that, you know, the property values and, okay, and people can maybe have a reasonable debate on the whole property values, but they also need to prove that it won't cause increased traffic congestion, which is hint why it which is hint why it is they're claiming in quotes, oh, this would only be about three a month as they try to get around the undue traffic congestion. But think about that last point there as well, about the use and enjoyment of one's property. And that's where I go back to the Supreme Court of Iowa that goes through and talks about what a nuisance is and what would escalate that nuisance to the point where it does affect one's ability to enjoy one's use of their property. The part about whether a normal person living in that community, such as our neighborhood, that has already signed the petition, would regard as, you know, seriously annoying, offensive, or intolerable. If an average person in our neighborhood senses it like that, then it is a nuisance and it is significant. So you can already tell by the petition and what this neighborhood thinks and how this is perceived by the normal person in our neighborhood, they can't overcome that use and enjoyment of one's property because we do find it to be a significant invasion as the average person in this area finds it to be annoying and tolerable and more. But again, they don't want to go through and talk about all the other requirements. They may be able to go through and go to their friends and colleagues on property values, but they can't on anything else, and they have to meet all of those standards. Which, you know, as far as it goes, as far as the standard for review goes, I would point out to, you know, those people who are going to go through and listen in the next meeting, as far as anybody who wants to see what that, you know, decision or standard is, you do understand that anything you broadcast on Zoom can be recorded. All right, so just putting that out there. But in any event, they haven't met all of the standards that they need to meet in order for this decision to go through. They're trying so hard to ram this through because they personally like it and they like the people involved in it, that the paperwork is sloppy. They're ignoring large sections of what it is they're required to do. And they're unbelievable biased in a proceeding that requires impartiality by all of those around the table here on the Board of Adjustments. Impartiality is a number-one requirement for each and every one of them that they have violated. And they don't care. All right, let's go ahead and let this wrap up.
Is there a motion to approve the findings? Second. Motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the roll call, please.
Gravy? Weavers?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Tams?
Yes.
And White's?
Motion stands approved. Is there any other business coming before the board this morning? Yes, ma'am.
Chairperson Bradley, as requested by my office, just so that everyone understands the steps that are to happen next after speaking with counsel for the City of Dennison. Matt Barick is his name. After these findings have gone through, it will revert back to counsel, at which time counsel will act on BOA's decision. If at any given point in time from this point forward, now that BOA has upstood their findings, the next appeal, if anybody were to want to appeal the decision one way or the other, goes through district court. Just wanted to make sure that we shared that information. I know we get that question a lot is what happens next. So it'll be on the council meeting for the next council meeting, which is the third Tuesday of the month. Thank you.
So any other business coming before the board this morning? If not, I entertain a motion for adjournment. Second, all those that favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion stands approved, board of adjournments. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, so I have a question for Tams because it appears she's the one speaking here. So she's having a conversation with Mr. Zink here, reassuring him about what's going to happen, reassuring him about the process about, you know, and maybe not worry if city council, you know, ends up remanding it back, that, you know, don't worry. But that's not the only thing here. So let's go ahead and listen a little bit more. Well, that's an interesting comment that he makes to Michael, that she makes to Michael Jones. Don't be discouraged by this. I mean, she knows him well enough, not only to have a little chit-chat, but to be wanting to console him, you know, about, you know, the process, you know, and reassure him about what's going on or what's going to happen. And, and the question is, why would he be discouraged at this point? I mean, at this point, what is he being told? They ruled in his favor and that it would go to district court afterwards. So what would he have to be discouraged about? Exactly how well do they know each other outside of this process? And again, if they're friends and they know each other enough that she should be, you know, that she would go off and console him and make sure that he, you know, has some emotional support there. How much of a conflict is there? Even the appearance of a conflict needs to be avoided in this particular situation before this type of body. And yet, once again, you see a lot of indications of personal friendships in which one friend appears to be voting on between two sides which side they're siding with. The person they don't know or the person they seem to be close friends with? Hmm. That is very interesting to me, don't you think?